Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Sampi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Here.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowsky.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
Acquor, Ms. President.
Okay, so, tonight, we would have normally begun with the compassionate city kids for our wonderful kids in Wayne Westland Schools, but before we do that, I did want to share some really sad and unfortunate news. Those of you may not be aware that we lost a member of our family here, our Westland family, and to some literal friend and family with the passing of Craig Welkinbach, our director for WLND. Craig was a longtime team member and family member here in the city of Westland, a friend to so many of us here in our city. He had been a part of the WLND team and our director here for well over 20 years. He is going to be sorely missed, not only his expertise in the field for what he did for cable access and media, but for the kind of person he was and the way he lived his life as a human being. So, I find it unfortunate but appropriate that we take a moment of silence for our friend, our colleague, our family member here in Westland. Craig, welcome back. Thank you. Thank you, and Godspeed to Craig. We will now continue on with special announcements and presentation, beginning with the compassionate city awards for our kids at Wayne Westland Community Schools.
My name is Amanda Fawnin. I'm the supervisor of social emotional learning for Wayne Westland Community Schools. And this is Daryl Beebe. He is the executive director of college and career readiness and social emotional learning for Wayne Westland Community Schools. And we are here this evening to present three students from our middle schools this evening for their compassionate acts. So our first student is from Adams Middle School. We would like to ask Jackson Vincent Fowler to come on up here with us. And if you can also join us, your principal Stacy Bukowski is here, along with teacher Amy Krupsky. If you guys can come on up. So Jackson's random act of kindness is that he's always the first to help others. Without asking or prompting, Jackson always tidies up the classroom, he makes sure materials are put away and that the floor is clean. Jackson is definitely deserving of some appreciations at his teacher. Thank you, Jackson.
So also, from Franklin Middle School, we have student Riley McCray. Is Riley here? Come on up, Riley. Tonight, I'm representing Franklin Middle School. I've been working there, helping out for about four weeks, and so I'm sitting here for the principal, Deanna Pringle. And Riley's act of kindness, she made homemade 30 candy-filled pumpkins for her volleyball teammates, and then made an entire class set for Mr. Jack's group of students. She is such a positive light at Franklin. Everyone should get to know her. Let's give her a round of applause.
And then our third and final student is from Stevenson Middle School, Sylvia Holdwick, with principal Kim Doman. If you could come on up. And Sylvia's random act of kindness is that she is helping other students with their academic and social challenges. Let's give it up for Sylvia. And then at this time, members of our Westland City Council are going to come down and give our students their certificates.
How awesome. Can you help those people that don't care how little? Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, it is so great to see the kids out here doing compassionate acts in our city and for our school district. So, thank you to each of the kids for their compassionate acts. Okay, we will now move on to comments on the agenda from the public, input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from city council. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir, Mr. Graham.
Richard Graham from Move Westland Forward. Great to be back, and what's even better is great to actually have a council meeting this week. So, well done for the Team Hart Wild 3.0 to actually show up for a meeting. Regarding, I believe it's, I don't have my agenda, old business, I believe it's old business, and hopefully the appointment of a councilperson to replace Deputy Mayor Godbout. Hopefully, this gets accomplished today. I mean, you've run this government now for how many weeks without the proper staffing, which is seven? And even more, hopefully, you don't continue this until at least May, or whenever you decide to get four people. So, you know, the citizens demanded change. They did that with the elections back in November. They continued with the election last month. So, hopefully, you guys can get back to actual work and not having meetings. Thank you.
Comments on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
Okay, these comments right here, these first comments right here, under the vultures, Department 748 under community development. And I just want to ask the question, I just want to ask the question of neighborhood services, do they have their own budget? Okay, now, the reason why I raised that question is because now I see that one of your people up under neighborhood services is being paid out of community development. So I want to know, why is that, if they have their own budget? Two, under, question R, under the community development block grant program. And the question that I have under that, under the new neighborhood block program, and the question of the item E. Okay, now, in regards to facilities, do facilities have their own budget to repair, to repair their buildings? And the reason why I raise that question is that money is leaving out of community development to repair city buildings, when I believe those monies should be going to the two-target areas, and that's Norway and the Carver subdivision. And I believe that the city should be responsible for its own buildings, because we pay for our own building. We pay our mortgage and everything else, and I believe that facilities, if the friendship centers need new carpet, then they should pay for it. So I would like for you, as council, to consider postponing that until we can figure that one out. And under the community block grant, HUD requires that we, as community leaders of the Norway community and the other targeted area, Carver subdivision, we're on a commission. And those commissions are to give recommendations on how money is being spent. And this item R doesn't have a recommendation from those community leaders. So I would like you to postpone those two items until we can get some clarity on them, of who's going to be repairing your buildings and these community block grant funds. And we should be able to get your recommendation back within five business days. Okay? Just want you to postpone it for five business days, so we can get some clarity and get a recommendation in. Because I don't want council approving any monies without those citizens' recommendations, which HUD requires.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, your time is up. Is there anyone on my right? Comments on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Comments on the agenda? Yes, Ray.
I want to say hello, everybody. And I want to read off this I, and what it stands for. It's Disabilities Awareness Month. And it says, "Adoption is prepared," proclamation, I think, "to the month of March 2024 Disabilities Awareness Month, the city of Westland," from Simply. So, what I want to talk a little bit about for the last couple of minutes, anyway, how important it is to have this. And I think, you know, years ago, and I'm going to say years ago it was, we came people, advocates like me, other people came a long ways with the voice, sitting on boards, for an example, in Lansing, talking to legislatures, also in the community, working, I'm also the peer mentor, working in community living services for a long time, and I love what I do. This is my passion, and I believe in people. And I'm going, you know, my tour, it's not just here, it's out there in the community. And I'm going to be training the Westland Police Department, the Fire Department, and it's good to know people with disabilities, how to work with people with abilities. That's what I'm trying to change, abilities. So, you know, and I'm proud, I'm very proud. We came a long ways. I remember back in the day, people weren't like, ignore me, if you don't make time for me, I'll make time. And I never take no for an answer, and I'm out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir, Mr. Pruitt.
I'm speaking on the nomination component and the appointment component. As we look back at the process, from the very beginning of this process, there has been concern with the legitimacy of the process, whether or not it's been going forth with full integrity. In the very first meeting, one of the candidates vying for the position said they received misinformation, and it came out to be true. And there was a holdover so that the process could go forward. I'm speaking this because in the dynamics and the direction of these appointments, there's been candidates that have felt like the process has not been genuine or fair. When I look at what's transpired over the last few weeks, many people in the community feel like decisions were pre-made, and that the process for legitimate questioning did not occur. When we look at last, during the attempt to overturn the veto, what we found was that there was a question from some council member to tell even Mr. Hornbuckle to go get additional votes. But when I also look at through my questions that I received, many of the questions that I received had nothing to do with being able to be there for the people. They were more concerned with how their agenda could go forward as opposed to what's in the best interest of the people. There were council members who didn't speak to other people who were vying for the position. And that's just not fair. There are people who have made up their mind on what race the person should be. That's just not fair. There are many good candidates, whether they be black, white, orange, yellow, green, or alien, that should have an opportunity, a fair opportunity. We haven't seen that. Do we delay at this point? No, we need to go forward. But we really have to do a heart check to see where we should go. Look out what's going on in the community. You see me out there. I am out there fighting for businesses, fighting for people, trying to make sure that we have a better community for all. And it's your duty to make sure you make the right decision with full integrity and not just based off of what you personally want.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Comments on the agenda? Is there anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my right? Anyone else in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move, close comments on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second, support.
Okay. There's a motion and support by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Clarification. The supporting documents for council, for consent calendar item B and regular business item seven are flipped in the packet. I believe that the items are correct, but just as a note, the supporting documents are flipped.
Thank you for that, Councilman. Great. Are there any additional changes? Yes, Councilwoman.
So, my first question is, can I move more than one thing at a time, or can I only move one at a time?
You can move more than one at a time.
Okay. I am going to make a motion to move item A, E, and R to new business.
There is a motion on the floor, it has support, to move items A, E, and R. Motion is by Councilwoman Baumann. Support is from Councilman Hersberg.
I'd like, I'd like to ask that you refer that to new business item 2A. Traditionally, we would go 1A, but we're doing other stuff before then?
Okay, so.
Is that okay?
That is good.
Thank you. Yeah, I had that originally, but, all right, all right. 3A.
4A.
4A. That's why I didn't go 3A.
Well, as you were right, 5A, right? To get rid of that all.
Councilwoman, do you have a preference as to exactly where it goes for consideration?
I will defer.
All right.
So, what is respected, what is recommended is good.
All right. Let's take a quick look. We are going to make it item 5A, unless there are objections. Thank you.
First, you have a motion on the floor. Take care of that one.
Yep. Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor, it has support. Mr. Clerk, roll call on the motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowsky.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item A, E, and R will become new business 5A.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the, yes?
So, I'd like to make a motion to take N, O, and P down to 5B. I think, 5B. Okay, thank you.
Please clarify the items again.
I'm sorry. It would be N, O, and P.
Thank you. To 5B.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor from Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilwoman Rakowsky. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowsky.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. N, O, P will be considered during 5B.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Any other changes to the consent calendar? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
There's no dissent, right?
No dissent. Is there any dissent? Any dissent?
For S's and J's.
Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
All right. Work with me here as I announce these.
Yes. Good luck.
Right. Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the special meeting held February 14, 2024. Approval of bid extension with Calhoun County Sheriff's Office for prisoner transport and lodging. The bid extension shall be for a five-year period. Approval of bid for city hall janitorial services. Administration recommended a bid extension with LS Cleaning Incorporated for an additional three-year period in the amount of $33,948. Approval of bid for professional services related to the unloading and installation of two new generators at the police department and the public service yard. Administration recommended the low bidder, Corby Energy Services Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $76,450. Approval of investigative technology subscription with Selbright. The subscription will begin immediately and will be valid for a one-year period, total cost for the initial year not to exceed $37,789. Approval of aerial imagery service subscription renewal with Nirmap USA Incorporated for the Department of Innovation and Technology. The renewal is for a one-year period in the amount of $17,000. Approval of service subscription renewals with Civic Rec, Civic Play, Civic Pay, rather, and Document Management. Term should be for a one-year period in the amount of $7,705.10. Approval of Barracuda Network Backup Lease Renewal for the Department of Innovation and Technology, amount not to exceed $28,800. Approval of purchase of five gas monitors for the Westland Fire Department in the amount of $7,598.06. Approval of purchase of one SIU vehicle for the police department in the amount of $80,125. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Livonia Public Schools for the installation of solar-powered pedestrian crossing signs adjacent to Franklin High School. The agreement has been renewed, reviewed, rather, and approved by the city attorney. Adoption of manpower budget amendment for confidential secretary pay grade. This item had been introduced January 16, 2024. Approval of request from PD Graham Elementary to waive the administrative city hall rental fee to host a fifth-grade celebration event on Tuesday, June 4, 2024, 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Farmer's Market Pavilion. The city hall association fee of $320 has been waived. The last... The last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared proclamation to proclaim the month of April 2024, Disabilities Awareness Month in the.
It should be March, not April.
I'm sorry?
It should be March, not April.
Thank you. I'm going to restate it. Adoption of prepared proclamation to proclaim the month of March 2024, Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of Westland. Moving to payment of vouchers, please note that the approval request is for vouchers from February 20 and March 4.
So.
Support.
There is a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any discussion regarding the vouchers? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
We'll move to unfinished business. Item one, this will be nominations to fill the, uh, open or the vacant city council member spot. And at this point, as the council president asks for nominations, I will then record them and per your own policies and procedures, place them in a box, shake it up, remove them one by one, and that is the order that they shall become voted.
Thank you. Will now open nominations. Councilwoman.
I would like to, um, I have a question first.
Yes.
Uh, the council rules do indicate that people can nominate themselves. Is that, has that?
Yes, the council policies and procedures do state that so people can nominate themselves.
Okay, so, um, in addition to that, I would like to nominate Candy Halton and John Sullivan.
Council President. I believe the attorney is trying to hear your attention.
Yes, sir.
Just to put a fine point on the question that was asked, um, that nomination of yourself is a, uh, provision that allows for a council member to nominate themselves for a vacant president, uh, position or a vacant mayor's position as compared to, there's no sense in nominating yourselves to the council. You're already on the council. And it doesn't provide for nominations from the floor, if that was your question.
It does.
It does not allow for nominations from the floor. It, it requires a council member to put a nomination into the box.
Point of clarification, can we have the rules, uh, or the policies and procedures, um, read to that point? Because I, I also read it differently.
Correct. As do I.
I think you're motioning to the clerk. Let the clerk find those. Looks like page five. Procedures for, first of all, Article II speaks to vacated elected positions. Section 2A, procedures for filling vacancies. Nomination to a vacant elected position shall occur by the self-nomination of the applicant or nomination by a council member.
Yes, I stand by my interpretation. Uh, what has occurred historically in the custom and practice is somebody earlier, and we had this four meetings ago or something, people stood up and said, I want to be considered. And at that time, I think there were 13 people who had raised, uh, their hand in one way or another to be considered. But ultimately, to get in the box, it, it, it takes a council member to say, so-and-so's interested and I'm going to put him in the box. If there, if there isn't that level of interest by a council member, then there wouldn't be that interest in voting for that person coming out of the box. That's the way it's been interpreted historically.
Councilman, did you have a, any further question?
No, we had nominated someone else.
Uh, you've nominated your two. Yep, you wait to the next round. Are there any other nominations?
I move the nomination, Lakeisha Maxwell and Adam Hammond.
Great. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Close, my close nomination.
I can't move on.
It's the two. Yep. There's a motion to close nominations by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Nope, sorry. Yes.
Yeah, it's not dissent, it's just discussion. I think, um, it would be nice to have clarification on what you were telling Councilwoman Baumann about two people.
Yes, the last couple of meetings, the, uh, procedure that I've set in place is for people to nominate two people during that round of voting. If we go on to an additional round of voting, then they can nominate additional people. But for this one round of voting, it would be two people that you get to nominate for this round of voting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, you're welcome. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Quick. Motion to close nominations is adopted.
All right. To be clear, those nominated are Candy Halton, John Sullivan, Lakeisha Maxwell, Adam Hammond. Take this wool-worn box that is empty, put the cards in it. I think Councilwoman Rakowski is going to buy me a new boxer on birthday.
Yes.
She's had a little bit of criticism about this. I do get it. For the benefit of those who have not participated or been aware of this process in the past, we put the names in the hat, clerk draws them out one at a time. That is the order that they are voted. As in the past, it does not take a motion and support to vote for that nomination. All right. Got to draw them out. First name, Adam Hammond. Second name, Lakeisha Maxwell. Third name, John Sullivan. This will be our, by roll call vote, the first roll call will be to appoint Adam Hammond as city council member. Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
Councilwoman Sampi.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Three-three tie. There are insufficient votes for Mr. Hammond. We'll move on to the next person on the list. This vote will be to appoint Lakeisha Maxwell as a member of city council via roll call. Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
Pro Tem Sampi.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Three to three. There are not sufficient votes to appoint Ms. Maxwell. We'll go to the next name. Next name is John Sullivan. With a roll call vote, vote to appoint John Sullivan to, uh, as a member of city council. Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
Pro Tem Sampi.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
By a three to three vote, there is insufficient support to appoint Mr. Sullivan. The last name to be considered during this regular meeting, Candy Halton. An affirmative vote to appoint Candy Halton as a member of city council via roll call vote, Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
Pro Tem Sampi.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
By a three to three vote, there is insufficient support.
Folks, we are, appreciate if we can have a professional business meeting here. Thank you.
We are going to now move to new business, item three. Request for city council to enter into a closed study session immediately to consult with legal counsel in connection with M. Johnson's claim and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law pursuant to MCL 15268E and H.
Some move.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
We will be in recess at 7:36 for closed session.
Okay, I'd now like to make a motion to return to the meeting.
Some move.
Support.
There's a motion from Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion?
Any dissent?
No. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent to return to the meeting? Any dissent? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
You don't need a roll call.
Okay, all right.
We're back. 7:46 PM. New business, item five. Approval to authorize legal counsel to resolve the M. Johnson matter.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Is there any discussion from the supporter? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
All right. Work with me here.
Good luck.
We are now at 5A. The first of 5A is item formerly known as Consent Calendar A. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held February 5, 2024.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion on the motion from the maker?
Yes, I would like to, motion for an amendment to add the word resolved to item 2024-02-38.
There is a motion on the floor to add the word resolved. Is there, and there's support from Councilman Hersberg.
Uh, because I, I wasn't copying everything as you said it, I'm just going to cut right to it. Is this the appointment of the council member?
Yes.
Item. All right, thank you. All right, so that's an amendment.
Yep.
Got to vote the amendment first.
Yes. With regards to the amendment, is there any discussion? Any discussion on the amendment? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
Pro Tem Sampi.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
The amendment fails. Returning to the item itself, approval of the minutes.
Is there any additional discussion?
I would like to ask a question through the chair to the attorney or on this. A motion, a motion, I guess, to correct the minutes to indicate something that they are, how does that work and what happens now with the actual minutes if they're not correct?
The minutes are correct if and when the council says the minutes are correct. So now you'll have a, a, uh, motion on the, on the original, um, uh, item A, 5A.
And second question, if the minutes were not to pass, what happens?
It would fall to unfinished business. Come back again to you.
Any additional discussion? Is there any additional discussion on the original motion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent?
Yes.
Dissent. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll go to 5A, E. This is Consent Calendar item E, and it is approval of bid for professional carpet replacement services at the senior center in the amount not to exceed $16,505.36.
Still a motion?
I'll move for purpose of discussion.
Okay. There's a motion from Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, this item is, I was going to also move, this was in, um, relation to Mr. Warren's comments about the Friendship Center, its budget, and then the subsequent use of, um, CBDG, uh, home funds to do these repairs. I just would like clarification through the chair to the finance department, um, or perhaps Joanne, um, in regards to how this decision came about and, um, you know, how this is an appropriate fund if Mr., uh, or appropriate use if Mr. Warren's comments about the commission not having given this recommendation stand. Thank you.
Joanne.
Uh, thank you through the council president. And if I might, um, answer Mr. Warren's question regarding the invoice voucher for neighborhood services, could this be the appropriate time to answer that question as well?
Yes.
Okay, so first I'll answer that question. Um, as, uh, recommended by the Community Development Citizens Advisory Committee and approved by the Westland City Council, community development block grant funds are used to pay, um, for the services of ordinance. Um, the staff fall under Neighborhood Services Department, but it is community development block grant funding that's used to pay for some of those services, and that's why this falls under the CB Department on the voucher list as it has for all of this fiscal year as well as the previous 15 years that I've been with the city. So, um, that is not a change on the voucher list. That is, um, how those invoices have been processed for some time. Um, and then, thank you, council president, to answer the question for item E, the approval for carpet replacement at the Friendship Center. Um, again, upon recommendation from the Community Development Citizens Advisory Committee and approval by the Westland City Council, $35,000 was allocated in this fiscal year for improvements at the Friendship Center. And this $16,505 recommendation is to replace the carpet. Um, the Community Development Department worked, um, in conjunction with, um, Barb Markham, the Friendship Center Director or Senior Resources Director regarding the needs at the Friendship Center. And again, the city, um, with the, uh, recommendation from the Community Development Advisory Committee and approval by the city council, has approved community development block grant funds for improvements there. This is an eligible use of community development block grant funds. Um, seniors are considered an eligible. Um, seniors are considered an eligible category of citizens and under CBVG regulations, and this is approved under that program as well as by city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
Any questions from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
We'll now go to 5Ar. Consent Calendar, item R, was approval of request to reprogram CBVG CV funds.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Councilman.
Thanks, I'll just reiterate the question that was asked at the podium. It was mentioned that HUD requires a recommendation by a citizen council, and, um, it was kind of being stated that that didn't happen. If, if the director can elaborate on that, are we following the process? Thank you.
Again, through the council president, um, so the HUD regulations regarding citizen involvement in the, um, funding use of the community development block grant and home funds. The way the city of Westland has implemented those requirements is through the Community Development Citizens Advisory Committee. That group meets, um, four or five times a year to make recommendations for the annual plan and then to review the use of the funds, um, after the fiscal year is over. We have historically not returned to the Citizens Advisory Committee for recommendations of budget amendments. As, um, the city council is aware, during the year, changes are, occur in the city and changes are needed. Um, and the process has been, again, during my tenure with the city, that during the year, um, changes to the approved budget come to city council for approval, um, and they have not gone through the Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, this does follow the process. If the city needed to change, um, the budget by more than 25%, then we would have the whole public, uh, participation process, but, um, these changes are much less than that and do not require the entire public participation process.
Any additional questions? Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent?
Dissent.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're now on to 5B. We'll begin with N. Introduction of Manpower Budget Amendment for Fiscal Year 2024.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion for the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any additional discussion? Yes.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, council president. Um, through the chair to our, um, Director Mulligan. So, this was, uh, it's actually a C1 to a C3. Uh, there was questions that got brought up to me about the individual taking overtime and that the individual would have overtime paid by DDA. Um, I just wanted to verify that that was the case, and then if that is the case, can DDA, because, uh, market vendors have come to me saying that there wasn't a lot of promotion, they felt that their, um, investment sometimes didn't always pay off on certain weeks. Is it possible that DDA could, um, come up with marketing funds to market the market? No pun intended. And then Kim can maybe flex her schedule. Um, that way, we, we get a benefit of promotion of the market, and then we also get maybe a flex schedule with that, um, that's C3.
So, through the chair, and thank you for your question, um, the DDA in past, um, years has allocated $30,000 to the chamber for reimbursement to run the farmer's market. That dollar amount has not changed, even though the city is now taking on the responsibility. So there is, um, you know, room in that $30,000 for additional market. And it also covers the additional, um, increase, um, from the C1 to a C3 with, as part of that $30,000 as well, if that answers your question.
Thank you, yes. So I would, I would just, um, ask, though, that if we are, um, increasing and having employees on overtime, that perhaps we look at a flex schedule, and best practice in corporate America. You know, if you are working later events, that you flex the schedule. That way, we have additional funds to possibly use for additional promotion. I know it may not always work. I know that her day-to-day is gonna be busy, but perhaps if we're able to do some additional marketing, and I can get with you on that too with just some ideas, that would just be my only recommendation. And it's great that DDA is reimbursing. So on the record, we want to make sure that individuals know that this is a net neutral for the city, but also DDA is coming to the table with the reimbursement of the individual. So, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Any additional discussion? Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
Moving to 5B, Consent O. Wave procedure to allow the introduction and the adoption of manpower budget amendment for fiscal year 2024.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
5B, Consent P. Adoption of Manpower Budget Amendment for Fiscal Year 2024.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion from the maker?
I just want to provide a point of clarity for, um, you know, those here in attendance and those at home. Uh, all three of those items had to be moved to new business because they all, um, rely on one another, and that's why all three are being processed as new business.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
All right. We're finally out of the fives. New business, item six. Set public hearing date for proposed 2024-2025 budget administration. Suggest a public hearing date of May 6, 2024.
There's a motion from Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
New business, item seven. Approval of minutes of the meeting held February 20, 2024.
There's a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Being that likely three will abstain because they weren't here, well, does that mean these minutes won't pass?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow the question.
So generally, when someone is not at a meeting, they abstain from approving the minutes from that meeting. So in this case, would three, uh, three yeses pass these minutes or not?
I'm sorry, you're on item seven?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, they would abstain.
Right, right. So then we have, so then these minutes are likely not to pass. Is that correct?
Mr. Clerk? The clerk is surprised that these were requested to be on here because we did not have an official meeting. Therefore, it's simply a statement in the book, so to speak. So in my opinion, item seven should not be on the agenda.
I move to remove item seven from the agenda. Support.
There's a motion on the floor to remove item seven from the agenda. It has support. Is there any discussion? Maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any dissent? Any dissent?
Dissent.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann. To remove item seven from the agenda.
Yes, we're roll call. Yes.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski. Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seven is off the agenda, not to be considered. New business. Item eight, Confirmation of Reappointment of Sharon Scott to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term, effective upon council confirmation and to expire February 23, 2028.
So move.
Support.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Sure. Uh, I would just like to continue to thank Sharon Scott for her continued involvement in the community. Does so many things, um, you know, as well as her active role with the Wayne County Community College. Um, she is really a, a good steward of what it means to be active in your community, and I applaud that.
Thank you. Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? I have discussion to offer. I too want to thank Sharon Scott for her many years of service here in the city of Westland and for stepping back up to, uh, serve here on the DDA, and as my colleague mentioned, also her service on the Wayne County Community College District as a trustee there. Uh, we very much appreciate her continued service here in the community, so thank you to, um, Ms. Scott, who I do not believe is in attendance tonight. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
New business, item nine. Nomination of Member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill the unexpired term of David Rapaport with the term to expire May 6, 2026. Deanna Statchow has submitted a letter requesting consideration for appointment and would also serve as the Planning Commission Liaison as required by Section 1.2 of the Zoning Board Rules and Regulations.
So move.
It's.
I'd like to nominate.
It's a nominate, yeah.
It's a nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
There's a motion to close nominations.
Support.
Support by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski.
Just any dissent?
Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 10. Appointment of Member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill the unexpired term. Deanna Statchow has been nominated.
Support.
We're having, we're having the vote for the appointment process right now. Okay, who made the motion? I'm sorry. Motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Statchow, please stand and be recognized.
New business, item 11. Approval of request to modify public hearing date to absolutely abandon, vacate, and terminate 50-foot-wide right-of-way portion of Ensley Avenue abutting lots 1206 and 1207. This is planning department number 2262. The original public hearing date was set for February 20. The suggested new date is May 6, 2024, to comply with the noticing requirements.
Support.
Point of information, the, uh, it says April 1st, 2024.
Yeah, we were notified by the planning director today that in order to comply with noticing, it needs to be May 6.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do we need to make an amendment or addition?
No.
All right, great.
But I didn't get who made the motion and supported.
It was Councilwoman Baumann, and who made the support?
Me.
It was Pro Tem Sampi.
Got it.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No, I, I, well, I'm, I'm just glad it's being moved because there's concerns that the original thing started to slide. It was actually moved, so we could actually get, at the public hearing.
Any discussion from the supporter?
Uh, no, so, it, this is gonna be struck then to be May 6?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
For that, correct. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item 12. Approval of request for disposition of city-owned property, parcel B, within a parcel that's also known as the Hawthorne Valley Golf Course site to Wayne County in exchange for the transfer of another parcel to the city of Westland to accommodate the development of a new fire station.
So move.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Oh, excuse me, vote.
Oh, uh, thank you, council president. Good evening, city council. Uh, thank you for your support in, uh, appointing Deanna to the, um, zoning board. She does great work and contributes greatly to the planning commission, and she'll serve, uh, the ZBA liaison position very well. So thank you for that. Uh, we've had discussion throughout the previous couple of years on this parcel as it relates to this swap here with the county. Uh, the planning commission, uh, well, I'm sorry, the city council approved the land division on December 4th of last year. Uh, that created the parcel on the right side, east side of the red line, and the parcel on the, um, west side of the red line. So that's now split in half. Um, on December 11th, the Property Disposition Committee met and officially voted, uh, to approve this unanimously, uh, this swap with the county, swapping this parcel B, uh, giving it to the county in exchange for this, uh, irregular-shaped lot over here. Um, this parcel B is, is not buildable. It's in a floodplain. Uh, there's a drop-off over there. Uh, this parcel here that we are, um, obtaining from the county is buildable. Um, it's to be used, and the reason for this, uh, is this will be used as part of the new fire station development. Um, it will be part of the, uh, potential, um, training tower, I believe. I'm not sure exactly what the fire department uses that for, and for a proposed sign that's later to be installed there. So this is what I'm bringing, this request, um, before you, uh, just to approve this transfer with the county. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Is there any discussions from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter?
So, um, just because I, just to kind of bring this to be, there's four parcels there, actually. Is that right?
Uh, correct. Uh, there is this, I don't know if you can see my pointer.
Yep, I can.
Okay. Uh, this parcel, you can ignore. It showed up when I s- did the selection on the map using GIS, but this is just irrelevant. Um, this 000. This small 001 is currently county-owned. And this big 001 is the former Hawthorne Valley Golf Course site that the city currently owns that divided it into two. Uh, so there's now two parcels that make up this large parcel, parcel B and parcel A. We are proposing to swap this to the county in exchange for this.
Do you have, through the, do you happen to know what they're going to do with that property? Or what, what, transpired with all this?
Sure, um, good question. Uh, they ha- are not going to do anything with the property, um, as far as I'm, um, concerned and knowledgeable about. It's in a floodplain. You can't build any significant structures there. Um, they want to, uh, combine it with their parkland, uh, the Heinz Drive Park Corridor. Um, and that's, that's what the plan is.
Yes, please.
So does that mean that parcel A, along with this new little triangular parcel, would now become, would, would need to become one in order to accommodate fire station?
Yes, and that could be done administratively, the combination of them, correct.
All set? Is there any additional discussion? Councilman.
Thank you, council president. Um, I won't be in support of this. I think everybody can see on the screen, that's not exactly a fair trade. Uh, we're, we're gonna give up parcel B, which is huge, and we're gonna get this tiny triangular portion of land so we can put a sign on it.
This was our old golf course, while it might, while it might not be buildable, we used it for a golf course. We've had interest for disc golf, we had interest for a arts and sculpture garden. So, to give this away to the county that they can't maintain their own parkland throughout Westland as it is. I live just down the block along Heinz, you know, I grew up, I still spend a lot of time on the trails there, they don't maintain a thing. So, we're going to give this away because it's not buildable, it just doesn't make sense to me. When the city used that as our official golf course, events, a number of things for over 50 years. So, I'm not going to be in support of giving that away just so we can put up a sign. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Is there any additional discussion? Any additional, yes, Councilwoman.
Based on that, what would happen if we don't approve this? What happens to that property? Is there any alternate with Wayne County on that property?
We would keep the parcel to the right, maybe combine it again, or just, just leave it there on both sides of the county property on either ends, which is, which is park property. What would happen with the county-owned property? I suppose we can request to purchase it, not sure how that conversation would go.
Any additional discussion?
I have additional discussion.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, and I tend to agree with Councilmember Hersberg. Even if it's unbuildable, it's still a green space that we could enjoy. And I feel like, you know, without knowing what the, you know, rate would be to purchase that triangle, is there any other purpose for us having that triangle other than a sign for the fire department? Is it right-of-way?
No, I don't think it would be used for right-of-way. Also, it was supposed to involve more than just a sign. When I was involved on a general basis with the site planning of the fire station, I believed that there was going to be a training tower built in that vicinity where the training tower staging could have been used, but I'm not, I haven't seen the plans in a while. So, I believe it was more than just a sign. I can ask Wayne County what the.
No, I don't think that's necessary. I think the information that's being relayed just may not be sufficient because with the plans that are being brought forward, I do believe that that 001 parcel would have to be subject to a curb cut to allow for the engines and other, you know, emergency vehicles to have access to the full footprint of what is being developed. So, you know, it isn't, it would be access then and right-of-way.
Okay.
So, you know, I think that's the other side of what we have to look at. So, we certainly would have to know before moving forward what the expense would be to just claim that, you know, purchase that from this, the county, as opposed to just doing a lateral transfer of title for those two different parcels. So, at this point, I would like to move that this item be postponed until the director of planning can have a discussion with Wayne County about purchasing 56007010591001 from the county, and then to bring it back at, once he has that information.
Support.
So, just to clarify, this motion is to table?
No.
Postponed.
It's to postpone.
Okay.
It will become, it will not be tabled, it would be a postponement.
Postpone, thank you.
To a meeting certain or following a discussion?
It would be following the securing of the information from the planning director from the Wayne County.
Thank you.
Immediately, you know, to the immediate next meeting from receipt of that information.
Yeah. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. I know our city attorney was maybe wanting to speak, but I, I think we should let, the fire chief is handling the construction of the new fire station. I think it'd be appropriate to at least hear from him at this point. Is that okay, Council President?
We have the motion and we have support for the motion.
But you weren't still in discussion?
No, we have, we're discussion on the motion and the support to postpone. We have a motion on the floor to postpone item 12 to a future meeting. It has support from Councilman Hersberg. Do we have discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
To postpone?
I'll do a friendly withdrawal so that the fire chief can speak, and then I can always readact my motion.
Okay.
Friendly withdrawal.
Except I'm out of paper.
Them's the berries.
Okay. Chief?
All right, if I may, first through the chair to Mo, what's, do you know the size of that parcel?
Not off the top of my head, no, sorry.
All right. So, the, the current plans do have the training kind of structure on that corner of the property. There won't be a curb cut there. The only curb cut we're using in the current plans is the curb cut that's already in place. So, depending on the size of that parcel, that may or may not affect the placement of the training facility. I'm not sure, again, just from this view, I can't really tell kind of the depth of that in comparison to our current plans.
Great, thank you. Yes.
So, Chiefs, through the chair to the Chiefs, you're saying we're not sure if we need it or not?
True, depends on the size of it and kind of.
Okay, I think the Councilwoman's motion was appropriate, so.
Yes, Councilwoman Sampi, and then, Councilwoman Sampi.
Thank you, through the chair to the fire chief. Are we still slated, because we've heard mixed, I guess, conversations on the training facility? We were supposed to be getting money from the Congresswoman, it was working through the school system, and now we don't know what the fate of it is. So, are we still doing the training facility? Maybe you can give us a little clarity on that?
Yeah, the training facility still go, no change there. We need that training facility to meet the state requirements now for continuing education, or we continue to pay Levonia or Wayne County or whatever, and the overtime that that costs, plus the transportation to, to each of those communities. So, it is within the budget to build the training facility, and that's the plan going forward. The monies that were appropriated by Congresswoman Tullie that went, ultimately went to the schools, the schools did back out of that project. However, this, this actual training facility wasn't part of that, they were going to kind of build their own, because they, the two needs were different. The schools' needs were different than the fire station's needs, or the fire department's needs, so. That was going to be a separate project anyway. But, yeah, the training facility still go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's been a minute since we've looked back around about that, so it gives us clarification. I think all of us were wondering kind of the state of that, but.
Yeah, and if I, if I may, the, we have a study session set on March 25th, so all of that will be in there. We're really kind of ready to go, I think, to bid here shortly, so.
Okay.
Be as soon as that you guys take, put your eyes on it.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Okay, so thank you, Chief, for that information. Again, without knowing if we need that or not, I'm not comfortable giving up green space for a possible triangle of probably unusable land. So, I would like to re-enter my motion as previously stated.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski to postpone item 12, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I got my light on.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for bringing that motion back up. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, we do have time for this. We haven't even seen all the plans yet, the site plan, how this is going to be used. We haven't had our study session yet or approved, we haven't seen the renderings for the new fire station. So, this is all a work in progress, we do have time. And I do want to see a site plan to see how this is going to be used. Again, this is just not a fair trade. You know, it's being stated that this large parcel's not usable and that this tiny one is, you know. So, thank you for the motion to postpone, I'm looking forward to more discussion on this. I just, we just can't give up that green space. It's not buildable, but we can still use it, so, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion on the motion to postpone?
Yeah.
Councilwoman.
My, my question actually has to do with the procedure here. By postponing it, I know it goes to another date, but what's the difference between postponing it and saying no to it now and having it come back in a different form? You can't come back, okay, just making sure, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I need motion to postpone, any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries to postpone. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks. Vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business, the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, or other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop until the speaker is, will stop when the speaker is completed. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Public comment, is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Public comment. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Gary Kaufman, a Westland resident. And the last time that I availed myself of the opportunity to offer public comment, my theme was expressing appreciation to everybody in the room who's involved with public service, and tonight I approach in a similar vein. One of the things I enjoyed most in my very young years was watching Hockey Night in Canada with my brother, and at the end of the game, they would always name three stars. And although this is unusual, I would seek to be indulged in naming my three stars for this meeting. And Mike, I was motivated to include you in this because of my admiration to the nth degree for your approach to public service and your dedication, but I couldn't fit you in because the theme that I decided to work with was people who have recently assumed new responsibilities in a new venue. And so, my three stars for tonight, number three, Mayor Kevin Coleman, number two, Councilman Peter Hersberg, and number one, Emily Baumann. And I made you number one, Emily, because I believe in ladies first.
Thank you. Public comment, is there anyone on my left? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Good evening again. As some of you know, I'm on a lot of your commissions. And one of the first things that when you guys appoint a person to a commission, you talk about what a thankless job it is, but we're glad that you're there. Okay, now, when these commissions make these recommendations, they're coming from the citizens. And in particular, this recommendation around this carpet thing. You take from the least and you gave it to the most. The individuals of the carpet subdivision, the Friendship Center is too far away from the attend, and most folks in the Norway's community don't attend the Friendship Center. But yet, you made a decision to provide them with all the comforts, and the communities need every little dime that they can get. But yet, I'm pretty sure the city has its own budget to give $17,000 worth of carpet over there, but you would take it away out of the target areas, the marginal folks of what your designers say, I got two marginal committees, communities, and you will take, take the money away and give it to the people who have the most. And that's shameful. That's shameful. And all of you, when you're running for office, we're here to help you, the people in the community, et cetera. And, like I said, those of us over at the community, we have no problem with helping out with programs. But as far as facilities, I'm opposed to fixing up your facilities with my community money. My community is rundown, but yet, if I walk up to the Friendship Center, I got some brand-new carpet up there. But yet, my sidewalks are tore up, and this million dollars that we get, you guys, our council is siphoning it off to the north side of town, and you're wrong for doing that. But yet, you claim, I'm for the people, come vote for me, I'll set you free. No, you're just putting me, backing us up in a corner. And yes, the job is thankless because you wouldn't even consider a five-day waiting period. So, I could go back to my commission and probably get it, yes, you, you wouldn't even wait for that. So, what was the big hurry to guys get the carpet up there? I, I just need to hear from you. What was the big hurry for you to ignore the citizens who could come back with a, probably a positive recommendation? What, what was your hurry? You know? But, I'm not going to forget this, yeah, because some of you, some of you guys would, you know, reelection time would be around, and some of you guys want me to walk you through my.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, your time is up.
My, my time is never up. I'm just going to leave the podium, I'll be back.
Public comment, is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
Richard Graham from Move Westland Forward. Just a few comments tonight, it's, again, disappointing. The voters and the citizens are disappointed that, you know, council, again, couldn't come to an agreement to have a, you know, put the seventh person on council. You know, what's interesting is the three no votes didn't nominate anybody, just kind of sat there, didn't nominate, but said no, 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 no. So, folks, here's what, here's what the plan is. They're going to wait until May. Odds are, Mr. H, Councilman Hersberg becomes elected, and then they have the three votes, Sampi, Ratauski, Hart, Team Hart has the three votes.
The team comments, let's refrain from that, please continue.
Team Hart, that's no good?
Calling people out as a team, specifically pointing out certain people like that, let's refrain from that, thank you.
Okay. So, hypothetically, three people, and we all know who those three people, they will then have the votes to put on someone like Landau and Hornbuckle, and they'll have their five, five votes to overturn the veto. So, Mayor Coleman, even if he vetoes, doesn't have the votes, so, or it'd be overturned, so. You know, rather evident what's going on here, especially, the citizens are paying attention, they pay attention more and more. So, as you, as you block, as you block, as you don't show up for meetings, as you turn in, that you aren't going to be a meeting the day after Valentine's Day and Ash Wednesday, when you knew about your supposed trip and your supposed classwork last year. Those people were the council president and council pro tem, Ratauski and Hart, at that time. But they didn't know their schedule, but they said they knew their schedule in '23. Why didn't you address that when you were, when you were in that position, setting the calendar, setting the agenda, and not within 30 minutes of each, each other on Thursday morning when you turned in your excuse not to be present and then causing a quorum, no quorum, which hasn't happened in, I mean, 20, 30 years? That's shameful. Shameful, shameful of the, of the elected people that are supposed to be working for the people. I mean, we won't even get into the people that voted no that are, seem to be anti-woman of color. They didn't put in Tasha Green, who was second to Mayor Wild. They didn't put in Deborah Folks, who was next in line. And then tonight, two other women of color. That seems to be where the no votes are at.
This is getting to be trending in personal territory.
But wait a minute, the last meeting, there was people coming up, and, or two meetings ago, talking about possible racism, I mean, that was allowed, right?
We're, we're trending into personal territory, Mr. Graham.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left? Yes. Yes.
David Swokis. 38 years in public service. 38 years.
And I have to say, I'm kind of ashamed right now. And I'm looking at everybody here, so everybody's just as guilty because you sit on this podium. When was the last time all of you read the Declaration of Independence? You know, it says that governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. I remind myself that every day when I serve. I've served in every capacity you can imagine, probably some that some of you could never even imagine. Public service is not convenient. It requires serious sacrifice. There are times where you might want to go to a family event. There are times you might want to, you know, hang out with some friends or whatever. But especially if you're in a leadership position, the citizens of this city gave you their consent to sit on that council podium. And they expect you to show up and conduct the business of this city. You know, I have a 78-year-old mom who has lived in this city probably longer than most of you have been alive. She watches this and she says, this is worse than 30 years ago. You know, we had four well-qualified candidates for council. And I remember many of you said, when you first started this process, you needed to get somebody on this council. You had four well-qualified candidates, and we couldn't build a consensus? Shame on you. I'm giving you my consent. The citizens, my 78-year-old mom who pays taxes as a senior, who has served this community as a nurse. I serve every day in this community at great sacrifice to myself and at great risk to my own personal safety. I got to tell you, I'm ashamed. I am very ashamed of so many here. You know, in less than 40 days, Councilman Hersberg is probably going to go to Lansing, and I'm glad. But then we're going to have even more problems. You don't always get to win. Your candidate doesn't always win for election or reelection. Whether we like it or not, Kevin Coleman is our mayor until January 1 of 2026. Get on board with him, just like I tell the Republicans. Joe Biden is still the president until 12/01 on January 20, 2025. Whether you like it or not, he is the president and he is governing. That's what the citizens sent you here to do. They sent you here to govern, not put out personal agendas. So think about it. Get yourself together.
Thank you. Public comment, is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Lori Wilson, Westland. I have to agree with this gentleman. I'm ashamed of all, not all of you, of the three who didn't show up for the last vote and the three who didn't vote this time and didn't nominate anybody. I'm ashamed of you, totally ashamed of you. Now, back over here. Your police officers were real nice. They escorted me down Henry Rough three times in two weeks. Never stopped me, but I know they ran my plates. And when they found out I was good to go, by the time I hit Julius Boulevard, they turned around and went back up. So, cool. The sidewalks, I don't know what's going on with the free sidewalk program. But my mother's 94, she's on a walker. She's right here. She comes with me all the time when she's here. And anytime she's walking down Julius, Hanover, or Matthew, and she has to lift her walker up at least this high to get over a hump in the street, in the sidewalk itself, that needs to be corrected. And in the meantime, y'all need to get it together because we elected y'all, Democrats, Republicans, whatever the case may be. I thought I could trust y'all, really. But y'all, y'all the biggest disappointment there is. I have never been this disappointed in my government.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Public comment? Anyone else on my left? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council. I'm Vince Harvey, City of Westland. Like many other residents, we're highly disappointed on the actions of this council, especially three individuals in this council, which we'll refrain from naming, from the last council meeting that decided not to show up. Coincidence is, you know, a big word, that, you know, things can happen coincidentally. You know, the time periods, you know, can overlap to make things look different to what it was intended to be. But with that said, I look at optics. The optics that were portrayed the last council meeting was disgusting. The three that didn't show up, the optics looked more like retaliatory because the vote could not be, the veto could not be overturned. And then, fast forward to tonight, individuals, the same, vote no almost every time. What's going on? Do you guys not work together? Do you guys have a political agenda? Which I thought council has no political agenda. But it seems like there's something going on with this council. So I implore you to, I guess, get your act together. And that's, I guess, why I'll have to leave it at that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on my right for public comment? Anyone else on my left for public comment? Yes, Ray.
I'll just try to keep something positive for a change. So I want to say thank you for the disability awareness, y'all, and the support. And people are living life today. They are. They're married, they're driving, they're out there. And I'm proud, and I'm the leader. I'm going to keep going at that. So anyway, I want to also talk about Craig a little bit. I am so sorry to hear about that. Saw it on Facebook, I knew it was coming because we were doing the PSA, I'm looking forward to that when that comes out. How, I want to talk about that man, he respected me. He respected people, all people, didn't matter who we were. He made time for me. He made time for people. And he's going to be greatly missed. And I really mean it. Because it's really good to find good people. It's fairly hard to find. And you know what we should say, you know, there's a thank you thing on Facebook. We should appreciate people, be thankful, because, you know, you don't know if that person's going to be there or not the next day. And I will keep saying, let's stay kind to one another. And, you know, I'm looking forward to training the Westland PD next week, and then the fire department. And it's not this day, and I'm going to the events, too. This month, my calendar is already, I'm planning on going to the Mayor of Evans, too. So I made time, and I'm going to be showing up. So even Ciccarelli and Mark at the library on Wednesday night, I'm planning on going there, too. So I'm out there. And then I'm going to Lansing next Thursday doing the presentation. And I'm also going to talk to legislators up there, too. It's about keeping funding going for people, even people that we support, people with abilities. And I am proud that all the, even autistic, autism, people with different abilities are living a life today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else in the audience? Public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. First of all, I just want to say thank you for the moment of silence for our friend, Craig Wakanbaka, recently passed away. Craig was our community media director for nearly 30 years. He was a friend to many of us here. The city really will never be the same without him. I believe that he was probably one of the hardest working city employees we have. He was known to be here seven days a week. He put his heart and soul into this city. He worked hard to make our department as strong as it could be and to get out the media communications of our city to the highest levels of professionalism. He was somebody that always brought a warm smile, a friendly demeanor, and friendly conversation to anyone who approached him. And I know many of us are just really sad right now. So I want to work with the council to make sure that we never forget Craig's memory, and we're going to talk about finding ways to do that. But I just want to say, my deepest sympathy goes to Craig's family, his wife Beth and his daughters, Molly and Hannah. We'll miss you, Craig. I want to thank the city council for confirming and reappointing Sharon Scott to the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you, Sharon. You've, former councilwoman, served on the DDA for nearly 20 years. I also want to thank the council for appointing Deanna Statch out to the ZBA. Thank you, Deanna, you're a hard worker, and we appreciate all your great input and service to the community. So thank you. I also want to thank the council for their proclamation for Disability Awareness Month. We really appreciate you bringing that forward. Ray, thanks for all your advocacy. Councilwoman Sampe, thank you for your advocacy as well for our differently abled community. I also want to shout out Women's History Month, which is February. I actually, I saw this on here, and it kind of missed me that, okay, actually not February, I'm sorry, March. March is Women's History Month, and it's a time that we celebrate the dedicated women that have shaped our history. And I actually ran into Judge Ciccarelli recently, and I told her, you know, living, when I first moved to Westland when I was about 12 years old, I'm 40 now, but when I was 12, I moved to Westland, and I grew up around the block from, at that time, she was mayor Ciccarelli. And I told her, I don't know if you know, but I think you had an influence on me from afar. Because when you know that that's the mayor's house right around the block, it's in your thoughts and in your conscience. And she's somebody that served in the three different branches of our government here. She was on city council, she was city council president, she was our mayor, and now she's our district court judge. So she's really been an inspiration for a lot of us, and I just wanted to shout her out for Women's History Month. And thank you, Sandy, for your, Judge Ciccarelli, for your service to the city. I want to thank everyone that attended my recent listening tour stop at the Westland Library. We actually had to open up the room because we had so many people there. We had nearly 75 people in attendance. Thank you for all the feedback and the great questions. This listening tour is going really well, and we've had several stops already. Our next one I'd like to invite the community to is going to be Tuesday, March 19. It's at 5:30 PM, and it's right here at City Hall. So the community is invited, I'd love to see you there, and maybe write down some questions ahead of time that you have for me. We call it a listening tour because I'm here to listen, not just talk at you and tell you what I want to do, but also get your feedback and see if I can implement it as mayor. We have a dog vaccination day coming up Saturday, March 23. It's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's also right here at City Hall. So you can get your dog licensed, vaccinated, and microchipped here for a very low cost. It's an event that's been successful in the city for several years, and we want to keep it going. It's free for Westland veterans, and the event is limited to the first 250 dogs, so you want to get there early. Again, March 23, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And other than that, I just want to thank everybody in attendance. Thanks for all your thoughtful comments at the podium. A lot of people said a lot of things. I take notes here. I'll be speaking to my team. And I also want to thank my team, you know, we've got a lot of professionals here that do a great job, so thank you for all your work, too. That's all for me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from the city attorney?
Just simply want to echo that Craig was one of the good guys, and we have his wife, Beth, and girls in our prayers at the law office.
Okay. We'll begin council comments tonight with comments from Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have much more, much further tonight. I just want to thank council for postponing the land swap at the old golf course. I really hope we can take a look at it and save it and use that land. Again, it just doesn't seem like a fair trade, so I'm glad at least most of us see it that way. And then I just want to address Mr. Warren's comments. The carpet at the Senior Center, I voted in support of that. That was in the budget. That was a budgeted item. So it wouldn't make much sense to vote for the budget with that in it and then vote against it. I did vote down the other one, though. Because you mentioned that the Citizens Commission has to approve all the expenditures, but then the director mentioned that amendments to that budget don't have to go through you guys. So, and I wasn't aware of that before. So I dissented that vote, and I didn't vote for it. And then I just want to thank all the residents who are interested in getting a council seat, getting the appointment for coming again. Seems like we're going to be waiting a while. I'm also disappointed, you know, there was no discussion, there was no other suggestions, there was no questions for any of you guys. So it's obvious that something's going on here. I think the entire community sees it. You know, I don't want to blame anybody in particular. I mean, obviously, if you can't be at a meeting, it is what it is. Maybe all three of them had good reasons. You know, when I first got on council, I was at Wayne State. One of our capstone classes that we needed to take to graduate was on Monday evenings at 7:00. I chose to come to council meetings, and I postponed graduation. I always put public service here first, and I continue to do that. So it's just disappointing the residents see what's going on here, it's obvious. So hopefully, we'll get out of this rut soon. That's it for me.
Thank you. We will now hear from Councilman Rakowski.
All right, good evening. One of my favorite meetings of the month, as highlights our children. I would like to congratulate, once again, Jackson, Riley, and Sylvia, who are middle schoolers in our community who demonstrated compassion. And I would just like to extend my condolences to the Wakanbaka family and let them know that I am praying for the light of peace to surround them and their entire family as they grieve. And then as far as the council meeting in which I missed, I am in pursuit of my master's degree. I have been for two years. It was my final class. I furnished the entire schedule to Council President McDermott. All of the meetings in January, my professor was kind enough to reschedule because each of our council meetings ended up being on a Tuesday. However, for the final one, it's a part of my graduation, it is my capstone, and it's for my master's degree, and I'm not a young person pursuing their bachelor's, was on the 20th. So hands were tied, tried everything I could. I'd rather apologize to all of you for my absence than to throw away all of the time that I had dedicated to furthering myself professionally, because this will not be my profession on this dais for 20 years. My husband will be retiring in seven years. That means I get to take on the reins of providing health care for my family, and by doing that through education is what I will be doing. Because as a first responder in a community not far from here, the day he retires, everybody in our home loses their retirement. So I get tagged in, and I'm going to do that through being an educator. So again, I apologize to all of you for my absence. However, I would rather apologize to you than to disgrace, dismay, and disappoint my family.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Baumann.
Thank you. I want to chime in. I did write down and want to congratulate Jackson, Riley, and Sylvia. That is a wonderful opportunity to recognize children for their compassion. So I've actually enjoyed that part of it, even on both sides of the dais here. I want to apologize for any misunderstanding I had on the nuance of the council rules with regard to self-nominating, and I misrepresented that. And I want to apologize to everyone that I did misunderstand that. And looking at it, it was, you know, maybe needed some clarification, but we had some discussion, and I really had understood that that meant that people could nominate themselves. So I just want to make sure that I apologize for that misunderstanding on my part and misrepresenting anything that would be different. Want to thank Gary Kaufman for all the three stars that he gave some of the council members. And I do, I've thought a lot about what Arthur, Mr. Warren, has said, and I want to understand more about what you were talking about, and I apologize if I didn't represent well in my vote. I know that I thought I understood what was... I know that I thought I understood what was being said by Director Campbell, but I want to understand more, so I'm offering that opportunity to please speak to me, so we can speak with you, so that I can actually understand what, all the little pieces of that, because I might have actually done something different if I really had understood that better, and I apologize again, because that five-day waiting period, I want to understand more about what you were talking about. I do, you know, I'm glad we were able to have a moment for silence for Director Craig, because that was, I knew that was coming, but that was, it was hard to see that. I do want to mention also a couple of dates. It was mentioned briefly, but March 6th, this Wednesday, is Meet the Judges at the library. That should be a very, that should be a really good meeting. I'm really excited, looking forward to that. Also, March 9th is, I know Council President might be mentioning something about this, but the visioning session this Saturday. I'm excited about that, because this is, it's kind of my wheelhouse as far as what I do as a vocation, is I love visioning things and being able to really think about all the possibilities, so I encourage people to come to that and help us with ideas on what we want Westland to look like, what we want, you know, all the things going forward, so on that. And the other one is March 15th. I'm excited for the game night here with Parks and Rec. That's going to be here at City Hall, so I hope people are going to participate with that. And the last thing I just want to make mention is that I think we have an opportunity. We have not actually passed the council rules for this new session, and we've met once, and I believe we're going to, hopefully we'll be meeting soon, but through some of these processes that have happened a couple of times just so far this year, I can easily see that there's some things that we might, we need to change, just in the rules. The charter is a completely different conversation, but we have a rules of operation of how we can do things, and I think there's some opportunity there to be able to make some modifications that could actually help things. And I'm open to hearing ideas if people, those council rules are on, they're available publicly, they're on the website, City of Westland. If you just type in "Westland Council Rules" or "Procedures," you can access this document, and you can read that. If you have some suggestions that you think you'd like to, I would be happy to hear them. I know for me, I actually personally would like to have a rule in there that would prevent any possibility of no quorum, so that you cannot approve more than two people to miss a meeting unless there's something really, really emergency, something, you know, something big, okay? So, I would like to see that in the council rules, so that there's no opportunity for that to happen again. That being said, again, I thank everybody. We're still in Lent, so I don't know if people have given up for Lent or what they're doing, but we are still in Lent, and so thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hertz.
Thank you, Council President. First, again, I'd like to express my deepest condolences to the Welkin-Bach family. As the attorney Fauston said, he was one of the good ones. I could always count on Craig for, you know, an ear, someone to talk to, and someone to, quite frankly, entertain you with all of his stories and how jovial he was. He really did brighten up the light in the city, and he made sure that not only did he brighten things up here, he made sure that everybody else could see it, too, through the media that he put together, and he built a fantastic team in all his years of service, so thank you, Craig. Again, I'd like to, as my colleague did, apologize for my absence. That was a vacation with my family that was booked last year. I did book that. It's very difficult to book a vacation with two working adults, excuse me, four working adults and a kid in school, so we did what we could. And President's Day was the only time that my wife could get off, my son wasn't in school, and my daughter could get off of work as well. As far as communicating it, I'll be totally frank, as a matter of public policy insecurity for my home and my family, I never communicate when I'm going to be away from my home ahead of time. This is something that's gone back to my time in the military as well as my service. It is a matter of personal security, and I don't do that. I communicated it the day after the veto was defeated, because I knew we had a problem, because then I knew that we probably would likely have a quorum issue, so I communicated that right away. I do agree, it definitely looks odd, and the coincidence is there, but it is. I can validate my tickets. I bought them on December 22nd as a gift to my family, so, and really, I don't have to, but if somebody wants to see the receipt, I can show it to them, so. So, I apologize for not being here. I don't intend to miss anything else in the future. If I do have something else coming up, I might break public policy, my personal family policy for security, and communicate it to the council president a little early, as long as the council president understands how important I take my security. I do not like to tell people that I'm not going to be at my house, if you can understand that, as well as many other people do, so. But ironically, we wouldn't have had an issue if the Mayor Coleman didn't veto Delano in the first place, so, but be that as it may, and it does, as someone said, it looks like something's going on. It sure did look like something was going on in that veto. That veto definitely said something was going on, so some people are going to see it one way, some people are going to see it the other way, but something started. If something was going on, nothing was going on until that veto started, and it basically just shook me to my core. I'm happy to go ahead and take a look at candidates for council. I'm just waiting for the mayor to provide me a list of names that he won't veto, so at least I know I can look at those and understand that he won't veto them. So, I don't want to put anybody through another veto potential. I would hate to see that happen to somebody again. So, that's it. Thank you.
Before you speak, I'm going to let the mayor speak because his name is mentioned. Mayor? Okay. Pro Tem Sampi.
Do you want to speak then? You're good? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting. I wanted to start with a few personal things. My son Gavin celebrated his 17th birthday yesterday. He makes me so proud, and being a mama, I have two children, so Gavin and Sierra. My beautiful daughter, Sierra, welcomed my grandson a few weeks ago, and I am so proud to welcome in my family. I've been telling the council for nine months, she's very little, very petite, and she had him actually prematurely, so we were in the hospital with him. He came home the day of, he was in the hospital for quite some time after. He came home the day of the council meeting, so I apologize, because I actually told council president the night before and said, I don't know if we're going to be discharged. She's not eating, he's running a fever. He understood, so unfortunately, in situations like that, you have to be a mama, and I welcomed her home. She's a single mama, so I had to take her home, get her situated, so in that circumstance, I apologize, but I had to choose my family unfortunately in that situation, so I couldn't miss that, and I apologize if you feel offended by that. I want to thank the clerk's office, Clerk LeBlanc, Deputy Clerk Shannon Inman, staff members Donna, Deanna, Lori, and Akita. They worked tires, Tyler, tirelessly. I can't even talk, because I'm tired myself. I watched my grandson last night pretty much every day since November 13th. They missed Christmas Eve, New Year's Day, and January 31st, when Clerk was sick, but everyone worked, so I just wanted to thank the city clerk, because we really do have one of the best, and I know that you guys have, yeah, we do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You really are the best.
I will pass along your compliments.
You and your team. I wanted to recognize you, because we have a lot of elections this year in particular, but you guys have pulled all of them off with a hitch thus far, and I know there's going to be others that you're going to be working on, so thank you. Thank you very much. I also wanted to share my condolences with the Welkin-Bach family. Craig did work under numerous administrations. He, just, you know, personally, he gave me so much advice. He even catapulted, you know, broadcasters into their career. He really was a true media icon. He had a sense of trust from all of us, and really, individuals that would come into his office, he'd be like, hey, we're not going to talk politics, but we're talking politics. So, we appreciate Craig. He's going to be extremely, extremely missed here with just his team, but also with all of us. I'm grateful for his friendship over the past few years, and I know that, you know, I'd have to plan an extra hour when I would come into his office, because we would always chat for quite some time, so. He had a sense of humor and wit and a smile that really lit up any room, so, again, I wanted to share my prayers with the WLND family, with his family, with the friends and everyone that knew him, so just wanted to share my condolences. Wanted to also congratulate our compassionate students, Jackson, Rodney, and Sylvia. To the reappointment to the DDA, Sharon Scott, Deanna Statchell, to your board appointment. Thank you so much. I know that you're always in the community, and thank you for the additional appointment. Ray did mention this, but I wanted to also highlight Disabilities Awareness Month kicked off in March. This is a very, very important topic for me. I was honored to record some PSAs that are going to air on WLND and also online. My son Gavin, Ray Schuholtz helped Gretchen Still and Carla Dean from Services to Enhance Potential Step, and C. Pascal Azay. We had some candid conversations, just short vignettes. We talked about embracing difference and embracing those that are different, whether you're mentally different or physically different, you know. To me, it's always been important to have inclusion, acceptance, and mental health has always been my platform, so just wanted to mention that it will be running online, but also on the cable station as well. So, thank you, Kevin. I don't know if you're in the back, but from WLND for embracing this idea. Again, I like having different ideas. It's something different than what we did last year, so. I wanted to thank my colleagues for passing the Disabilities Awareness Month that was brought up today, so obviously, they know how important it is for me as a sister, for my brother who has special needs. It was really important that we highlighted this, and it is March, not April, so thank you, Clerk, for correcting that. I think this was brought up about the game night, so I look forward to that at City Hall on March 15th from 6:00 to 8:00. I think I might try to bring my family out if they, they'll join me, I don't know. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And also, I wanted to congratulate the Southeast Michigan Construction Academy in Westland. They hosted their ribbon cutting on the 29th. I was honored to attend. It is a phenomenal opportunity for those students that might not want to jump into college, but they want the hands-on training, so it is beautiful. If you've not been in there, I would encourage you to check it out. It's actually right behind us, off of City Hall. Keith and Deanna and their team did a great job helping blue-collar families being able to blossom, so it's such a gift. The skilled trades are in demand, so I hope that everyone is able to check it out. They welcome everyone to tour. Yeah, so our next council meeting is March 18th at 7:00. Obviously, we welcome those to come out. If anyone wants to reach me, (734) 637-2078 is my cell phone. Until then, be kind and safe with each other, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I want to start out by thanking, as other people did, the compassionate city kids. It's really great to see Jackson, Riley, and Sylvia. Sometimes you behave a heck of a lot better than us up here, I tell you what, some, but thank you for your compassionate acts and what you do to really make our city shine. Thank you to each of you, Jackson, Riley, and Sylvia, for that. Thank you to Deanna Statchell, also thank you to Sharon Scott for stepping up on your reappointments. We appreciate your service to the city and your continued service for pennies on the dollar when it comes to the work that you do on these boards and commissions, so thank you very much for that. This was brought up a couple of times here tonight. Each of my colleagues reached out to me prior to the meeting to let me know that they would not be there, each one of them. Councilwoman Rakowski is correct. She did share her schedule with me. Councilman Hertz did share with me that he would be out of town on a vacation, and as he said, he does not want to have to share that ahead of time, and my colleague did reach out to me in regards to her daughter being in the hospital still, so I do want to verify and back up that each one of them did reach out to me ahead of the meeting. This wasn't an 11th-hour thing. They did reach out to me. Couple of other things I want to thank, the clerk's office for their work in a very busy election season. I know they still have more work to come. This is probably the busiest work election-wise in the history of this clerk's office, given the early voting, the no reason absentee voting, and the multiple elections that we will be having this year, so thank you, Clerk LeBlanc, Deputy Clerk Inman, and your entire team, and all of the precinct workers who are out there at 4:00 in the morning and staying till as late as midnight or later to make sure that every vote is cast, every ballot is counted, so to everybody in the clerk's office and to all of you who work the precinct, thank you for awesome, tireless, and thankless work. We very much appreciate it. And as I say, democracy is not a spectator sport, so thank you to everyone that participated and voted in the presidential primary, and to those who may have participated in also the caucus that I know took place for the Republican caucus, and we have another special election coming up in April, and I certainly hope that you get out and vote for that as well. The visioning session was brought up tonight. We are going to postpone it a couple of weeks. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. It's going to be, we're still having it. It's likely going to be postponed till the 23rd. Some people requested some more time to get things on the table. Also, I think, given where we're at with the council, I think just we need a couple of weeks here to collect things and, I think, get things back, I would say, a little bit under control, and hopefully have some trust built, so we feel that we want to share our vision with the city, with everyone, so we're still having it. We're likely postponing it to the 23rd. I will be communicating that with the rest of the council, but I think it's important that, you know, folks feel that there is trust to even want to share their agendas and stuff, so still having it, not canceling it. This has been something that I know a number of us have wanted to do for years, and don't show up this Saturday. We will not be having it, but hopefully on the 23rd, there will be further communication regarding that. I heard it was brought up regarding the council rules, and I thank you, Councilman Bowman. You know, I was under the impression, too, given what the language was in there, that nominations would be from the floor, and I think this is something that our Subcommittee on Council Policies and Procedures, which consists of my colleague, Councilwoman Bowman, who brought that up, Councilman Hersberg, and Pro Tem Sampi can hopefully look at. Thank you, Pro Tem, for Disabilities Awareness Month. I know that's something that you've been passionate about the entire time you've been on council, obviously, given it's personal to you with your family, so thank you, Councilwoman Sampi and Ray, for, you know, kind of getting together and really spearheading that. Very much appreciate you doing that. Just a couple of other things here. We are heading into the spring, which means it is not only storm season, but DTE power outage season, and that means that, you know...
Is that a season?
It is a season. In Michigan, when you have a grid as unreliable as DTE has left us, it is more than a season, it is a rite of passage, and damn it, it shouldn't be, and we all deserve better on this, and I feel like a broken record that I've been up here, you know, time and again and again, and I've talked ad nauseam about some of the problems that we have. We rank, you know, in the bottom five, bottom 10, excuse me, in the nation in grid reliability. We're 34th in the nation in costs, and the problems seem to get worse and worse every year, and I know the problems get worse, not only because I've experienced it, but because I've heard from so many of you who called me, who, when I've knocked your door, you've told me that your power's gone out, that you've had DTE come in your backyard and say they're going to trim your tree in a year, year and a half, two years plus go by, and DTE never comes out to remove that tree. I know it's been a huge issue for many of you, and it's something that I've also, and many of us up here have personally experienced. Ultimately, you know, I've been a broken record talking about the problem, talking about the solutions. I think the number-one solution is to replace DTE. This is the long-term solution. I think there's kind of short-term, mid-range, and long-term stuff. I think we need to replace them with a public power initiative, and I think that because we've given them more than 40 years to upgrade this grid, and in some cases, they haven't replaced poles and fixtures, wires, in decades, and we find ourselves in a situation like Westland, where we have lots of above-ground power lines, and we face these constant outages because we don't have the buried lines, and DTE comes out and says, yeah, well, but it's a million dollars a mile to bury these power lines, and we just can't afford it, so they cry poor to us, but then they go to the Michigan Public Service Commission and ask for 8%, 10%, 12% rate hikes, and generally, more often than not, shame on the MPSC, they get it from the Public Service Commission, and it's really a shame for all of us who see our rates going up time and again, so yes, spring is coming, it is storm season, but it also is coming upon us DTE outage season as we get into the spring and summer. With that, if you need anything, as always, you can reach out to me at (734) 890-2146 on my cell phone. You can follow me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott. I know I haven't been as chatty, or posting on there as much the last couple of weeks, and hope that, I really hope that we can make things better from here, and I think that's going to be incumbent, not only upon the council, but the administration working with us as well. To have a team, it takes two. You cannot have a team of one, so that's all I'll say about that, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn? So, that's all I'll say about that, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?